And welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of September 4, 2018. Please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, we're going to have a special presentation. Our Mayor, Justin Manalo, will be administering the oath of office to a new Commissioner, but yet he was our former Commissioner, Howard Edelman. And for those of you wishing to address the Planning Commission meeting tonight on this item, please fill out a card that's at the adjacent rear of this room. And please be reminded you have two minutes to speak, and just pass them up to me through the staff. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
All right. The mic's on. So please raise your right hand, and I state your name.
I, Howard Edelman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Justin.
Commissioner Edelman, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I would like to say that it's a pleasure to be back on the Planning Commission after an absence of about two years, I guess. Time flies. But I really enjoy being on the Planning Commission and being a part of, you know, a part of, volunteer part of government in Daly City, Daly City. It's very fulfilling. Thank you very much.
And thank you to Councilmember Glenn Sylvester tonight for being here with us.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do would like to say congratulations to Commissioner Edelman and also to all of the Commissioners here, Commissioners Satori, Commissioner Roda Asmagbal, and also to you for your commitment to our community, you know, ensuring that our community has projects that reflect what we want here in Daly City. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, for being here tonight. Thank you. With that, may I have a roll call, please?
Satori.
Yes, sir.
Dasmagbal.
Here.
Edelman.
Here.
Proaño is absent, and De Giovanni?
Present. Thank you very much. And do I see any amendments for the approval of amendments for meeting May 1, 2018, or any amendments for special meeting July 9, 2018? Hearing, none. I'd like to make a motion to...
So moved.
So moved, thank you. And a voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? So now we're going to open our public hearing. But before that, I'd like to say that our associate planner, who will be presenting tonight, is Corey Alvin. It's been a pleasure to have him as our dedicated employee of Daly City. He will be moving on to another adventure in his life, and I wish him the best, and it's a pleasure knowing you. And I just found out, we just found out the news tonight, so if anybody would like to say anything, um, thank you for being here, and thank you for your dedication, and if any of the Commissioners like to say anything.
Thank you for your service. I was delighted to see all your presentations this past couple of years.
And would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure working here with all of you, being at your service. The city is growing and lots of neat things happening here. It's good to be a part of it. So, thank you, and I wish you all the best.
Same to you. We wish you the best. Thank you very much. The other planners like to say anything? Oh, okay. We all like to say anything. He's pretty special, so it's kind of hard. So now I'd like to open the public hearing for the only item we have on the agenda tonight, and that's the General Plan Amendment. It's GPA-9-14-9637. It's an amendment to an existing PD 57 major subdivision. It's SUB-9-14-9643. It's a use permit for UPR-1-18, 13248, and design review. The applicant is proposing to construct 323 condominiums and three high-rise residential buildings, and 176-room hotel, and a single high-rise local building on a vacant 6.06-acre south side of Cerro Monte Boulevard. And the details will be given by our associate planner, Mr. Corey Alvin. Please go ahead, please. Thank you. And if everybody, before you start, if everybody would hold their questions during the presentation, it would help us with streamlining, if that's okay? If you can jot down to the Commissioners, it would help. And then we can ask it at the end for the associate planner. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I am Corey Alvin, presenting a project at 525-595 Cerro Monte Boulevard. This is a precise plan review that we are presenting in conjunction with explaining the previous proposal, which is actually currently in effect, and we have an entitlement on this project, on this site, and I'm going to go through that as well. Here is this, sorry. Here is the site. It's just east of the Cerro Monte Shopping Center, faces Cerro Monte Shopping Center, between Calan and Geller Boulevards. The application request today is a general plan amendment, plan development, major subdivision, use permit, and design review, as was described by our Chair. These are some site photos, current site photos. The arrow here indicates where the site is proposed to be built. This is a pretty big hill. The project starts at the bottom here and goes up. It's the view looking south from Cerro Monte Shopping Center. Viewed from the west, looking down the hill, this here is the site. And this is viewed from the south, from the Chinese cemetery. And the site buildings will be around this ridge. The current entitlement, as I mentioned earlier, is an approval of five residential buildings, including 200 condominium units and 450 parking spaces. The tallest residential structure would not exceed 65.5 feet above grade. Also, 137-room hotel, including 147 parking spaces, are also approved, not exceeding 90 feet above grade. So to give you a bit of a comparison, this was, this is the currently approved plan. It was approved back in 2004. As you can see, this footprint occupies much of the site, lot line to lot line. There are five buildings here and a road between them. This is an artist's rendering of that proposal and that approval. So as it stands today, this could be built, along with the subdivision that was approved back in 2004. The proposed project would construct, as I mentioned, three high-rise residential structures, establishing a base number of dwelling units at 281, where 200 are currently allowed. 176-room hotel, where 137 rooms are currently allowed, and these structures are identified by Building A, B, C, and D. Building D is the hotel site, which I'll go into detail about. Building would be, Building A would contain 133 units at an elevation of 238 feet. Building B would contain 95 units at an elevation of approximately 196. Building C would contain 95 units at an elevation also of 196, 196 feet. Building D is the hotel, which would contain 176 guest rooms at an elevation of 247 feet. So obviously, the hotel is the taller of the four buildings, and our current height limit is 90 feet, just to give you a comparison. Whoops, sorry. This is kind of an area site plan. The existing McDonald's is down here. The gas station, as shown in the photos, is up here. This is Calan Boulevard. This is Geller down here, and the Cerro Monte Shopping Center across to the north from the entry of the site. So the site, as the footprint is designed, or drawn to be designed here, is quite a bit, the footprint is quite a bit less than what is currently proposed, or what was currently approved, is currently approved. The footprint probably takes about half of the site in what was approved previously. So the design of this footprint is more linear, but taller, as you'll see in the elevations. So the 323 units, which is 123 more than what was currently approved, what is currently approved, would be captured in basically building taller buildings, but less footprint. So the less footprint actually is impacting the environment less because you're not cutting as much into the hillside as the current approved, approved project does. This is an aerial model view. You can see how linear the site buildings are, and the previous proposal basically covered this whole lot. Previous approval, I should say. Photosimulation, looking from Cerro Monte Shopping Center. This is the first residential parking level, which would occur. You enter the parking garage here, so this is the very lowest elevation of the site. You enter there, and this would be the floor plan, coming in from Cerro Monte Boulevard. The Level 1 garage enters here. There is a lobby here. There's areas for delivery here, so a lot of the activity happens at this level. Parking Level 2 is accessed here, where you come in from Cerro Monte Boulevard, you take sharp right, come up the hill, and enter the garage here. Same with Parking Level 3. And Parking Level 4, you actually enter on the west side of the building, right across from the hotel. So by the time you get to the Parking Level 4, you're at the same level as the parking level for the hotel. This is the terrace level, which was, which is just above the Parking Garage 4 level. Let me just go back here to the elevation. So the terrace level is here, and there are many spaces on the very ground floor of the residential units in the hotel. This is the proposed landscape plan. The landscape plan is very involved and detailed. We do have more specific plans in the office that are available for viewing. We worked quite a bit on making sure there was adequate pedestrian circulation and that the landscape complemented it. Now, the hotel proposal, and this is a photo sim looking east, this is the hotel at the top of the hill. The terrace level is here. Four levels of parking beneath that terrace level. Again, the site plan here shows the hotel. The entry of the hotel is here. This is kind of a roundabout for deliveries, pickups, also fire access. The parking, or the garage parking access is here. And as I mentioned earlier, the Parking Level 4 for the residential buildings is also at this level. It's a proposed landscape plan for the hotel. Parking. Per the zoning ordinance, 591 parking spaces are required for the residential portion of the project, and 243 parking spaces are required for the hotel portion. The project proposes 480 residential parking spaces and 187 hotel parking spaces. A parking analysis provided by the applicant's consultant concluded that, based on the shared use parking demand that takes in consideration public transportation and ride sharing, the peak parking demand for the residential portion is considerably reduced to be 438 parking spaces for the residential portion and 187 parking spaces for the hotel portion. The city's Affordable Housing Ordinance requires housing developers to allocate 20% of all ownership dwelling units be affordable to households at or below 120% of the area median income for San Mateo County. That's about $118,000. 56.2 affordable units are therefore required. The applicant proposes to build 56 affordable units and pay the estimated fractional housing impact fee of $39,113. That would take care of that 0.2% of the affordable housing units required. Now, there's a rental variant here as well. Depending on market conditions upon construction, the applicant may opt to rent the condominiums rather than sell them, and he, the applicant, has been approved for rental variant considering 281 base units. The rental variant would then therefore provide 42 units. That's 15% of 281. Density bonus. Compliance with the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance qualifies the applicant for a 15% density bonus. This is how the 281, 281 dwelling units increased to 323 because of the 15% bonus. They were able to add 42 units to the base of 281. So 281 would be part of the ordinance for the Plan Development 57, PD 57. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, the city prepared a final environmental impact report to assess the environmental impact of the project. The FEIR incorporates the draft EIR, which the city made available for public review between January 24 of this year and March 12. A list of the project's environmental impacts is provided in FEIR Appendix 1, Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, MMRP, which is also available in our office. The applicant will be required to implement a number of mitigation measures over the project build-out, including those for air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, and soils, hazards, and hazardous materials, noise, and transportation. A particular traffic mitigation requires the applicant to pay a fair share toward the construction of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Highway 1, northbound, off-ramp, and Cerro Monte Boulevard. Of course, the applicant has agreed to pay that. Also, the FEIR indicates that the project would add more than 1% of capacity to the I-280 southbound weaving segment between Highway 1 and Cerro Monte Boulevard, which operates at a deficient level of service without the project, and is considered a significant environmental impact. That freeway is, of course, is under Caltrans jurisdiction, and although Caltrans is planning to implement improvements to this section of the freeway, that would likely reduce the project's impact to less than significant. Although no mitigation measures have been invited, been provided by Caltrans, and the timing of these improvements are not within the city's control, the impact would therefore remain significant and unavoidable. Such a significant and unavoidable impact is permissible under SEQA, provided the city council adopts a statement of overriding considerations related to it. The statement of overriding considerations will be included in the city council resolution certifying the FEIR for the project. Staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend, the city council, that the city council, one, adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, advise the city council, advise the city council, certify, certify of the Cerro Monte condominium and hotel environmental impact report, adopt mitigation and monitoring reporting program for the project, and recommend to the city council the approval of General Plan Amendment GPA 914-9640, Plan Development PD 914-9637, which is an amendment to the PD 57, the major subdivision and use permit, and the design review, subject to conditions of approval outlined in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions. Also, the applicant is here to provide a brief presentation, as well as his project team, to answer any further questions and details you might have.
Would the Commissioners like to ask questions now, or wait till the applicant do their presentation?
I have a lot of questions.
You want to wait till the applicant? Would the applicant, please, go ahead, continue the presentation? That way we won't save the questions. Thank you. And before I forget, if there's anyone out there that still would like to make a public comment, the cards are at the back, and just make sure you send them to the staff, and then I'll take them. Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir. Thank you for, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you for having us. Good evening, Commissioners. Mark Loper from Ruben Junius in Rose on behalf of the project sponsor. We're very excited to be here today and want to start off by expressing our thanks to city staff for excellent work. It's been a long process, and we're very happy to get a chance to present the project. Recognizing your time, I just want to run through a few highlights of the project. First, this project would deliver high-quality, mixed-income, transit-oriented housing on a site close to existing transportation networks, major job centers, shopping, and resident services. New housing of this kind is desperately needed in Daly City and the entire Bay Area. This is a zero-displacement project that can actually be constructed, and it delivers comfortable, livable homes for all future residents. Along those lines, the project before you today proposes 56 onsite affordable units. Its approval will go a long way towards meeting Daly City's RENA obligation for below-market-rate housing. The units will be offered at 110% AMI, which is attractive to teachers, civil service employees, first responders, and blue-collar workers and their families. Families that are finding fewer and fewer homeownership opportunities in the Bay Area, and in particular, along the peninsula and in the Bay Area core. I want to point out that affordable housing was not part of the prior project, so one, one way of thinking about what is before you today is that this is a project that proposes 123 more homes, and 56 of which are going to be affordable, that wouldn't be provided otherwise. The hotel aspect of the project will provide a significant source of revenue to the city through the city's transient occupancy tax. Meetings, weddings, and conferences will also benefit local merchants and businesses, and future residents and hotel guests will be a ready-made clientele for the numerous retail options near the property. And finally, we understand that there is some concern about the amount of parking and congestion, and just a few details on some transportation-related aspects of the project. The project's residential parking is a little bit south of 1.5 cars per unit, and that's actually less than what the transportation consultant concluded the peak demand was, which means that this project is actually providing more parking than what is actually necessary. Studies show that less parking actually changes behavior. It reduces car reliance, and particularly in locations like this, that are within walking distance of many retail options and seven SAM trans bus lines. A few specific measures related to the site itself, transportation, and circulation. There's valet parking for the hotel, and the consultant can talk about that if anybody has questions about the amount of valet parking. There's a shuttle for residents that's going to take them to and from transit hubs at peak commute hours. The project's design keeps vehicle flow within the project site as much as possible. It minimizes the amount of times cars would spend on Cerro Monte Boulevard. And as you heard, the project sponsor is paying its fair share for a traffic signal from Cerro Monte. With that, I'd like to introduce the architect to walk through a few major design highlights. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Albert Costa, the architect for the project. I wanted to run through just a few design items, adding to what Corey Alvin has presented to you. And I want to actually first start by thanking the planning staff for working with us for all this time, and greatly appreciated their help on this. While he's getting that up, in general, we wanted to mention that the design for this project is going to be quite sustainable. We're going to be trying to, it was our job to try to make the smallest footprint as possible for this project. The other project that was entitled went way back into the hill. It was undermining and cutting into the mountain quite substantially, and most likely could not be built. So in this case, we, we pulled the project forward towards the road, so it's just at the foot of the hill. It has a small footprint, leaving the hillside to be natural and the way it is. And the hillside actually becomes a backdrop, a backdrop to the buildings, and there's nobody behind there. So the heights were actually in relative... And there's nobody behind there, so the heights were actually in relative proportion to that hillside in the back. The towers are skinny, they're proportionally narrow deliberately. When you go up and down Cerro Monte Boulevard, you'll see the thinness of these buildings. The buildings are single-loaded corridors and they, all the units face out towards, they look over the, um, Cerro Monte Center Mall. And, um, there are no units that face the cemetery towards the back. The forms of the project, the design is basically modern, uh, and contemporary. It has a cradle inside of it. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Cory. Can I click this to go forward? Oh. Just roll. Got it. Here we go. So I, I have a, sorry, I have a couple duplicates here that Cory had shown, but this is the, this is the, the project as seen from the mall. And, I think this is sensitive. That's the front entry down on the bottom. We're going to be making the entry into this project well-lit and, um, very beautiful. We're looking to do, uh, great landscaping and, um, softening with greenery. Uh, we have a light well that shines down through the parking garage that illuminates the back wall of the parking garage. It's hard to see it from this view, but that's there. That's the hotel. That's the view again from the thing. Speaking of views, we had an outreach, uh, meeting, um, with some of the neighbors and, and views came up as, as part of the, uh, discussion. Most, um, most importantly, from the Cypress Point development that's adjacent to the site. Uh, so I wanted to, we, we then in turn created a few simulations to show maybe what it might be like. These are some aerials from an aerial photographer that took these shots directly, uh, these, that's the end of the development right there that the, at the bottom. I guess I have a pointer. Yeah. Right here. And so the project is off to the side here. These, these houses are also enshrouded with trees, but nonetheless, the McDonald's is right below it over here. There's another view here and another view this way, looking over the mall and the view. So again, this is, this is where that those photographies were taken. This is the McDonald's, and so these, this was, this is one of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting. So I wanted to, I wanted to show that. So, in summary, we think that the project site and location is a great site, uh, for development. It's, um, it's, it's right across the street from the, from the center mall. We've done our best to pull this thing down and make it a feasible project, unlike the other one that was, uh, we think is infeasible. And we've created our own frontage road and then three residential buildings with a hotel component can turn around. We think it's the, uh, the highest and best use of this property and, um, well, I can answer any specific questions as you get into them later.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Kelly, open up to the Commissioners, beginning with, uh, Commissioners Satori.
You know, I have a lot of, a lot of inquiry here, but, uh, let me give you a predicate of, uh, why I'm here. And as a planning commissioner since two oh one, I have always been a proponent of growth and development in the city. But when I was studying this, Your Honor, two things, it's not, it's not about the parking or the traffic congestion. It can be solved. The point here is about the so-called econ- ecological, uh, protection and preservation and environmental implication of this. My question is here. How many trees are going to be pelt of this proposed project? Secondly, you may answer this or not. How many tons of soil is going to be removed from the area? How many tons of cement is going to be poured in the project? How will it affect the perpendicular area of the proposed project? And my, another question is point of inquiry is, what happened to the previous project in the same location that we have approved? About two oh nine or two oh eight, when I was still the chairman here? So I want to know, because if it is only for profit, then I think this is not in order for us to approve this. So, my point here, Your Honor, is if this can be answered, uh, in such a way that ecological and environmental protection will be preserved, then by all means, we have to look into this. I have a letter here sent by some of my friends here in, in the Bay Area, specifically here in Daly City. It says here, "The severe apathy or noncommittal today to the environment protection and ecological preservation for system for profit and the inevitable for tomorrow, it will be a disastrous consequences for us. It will set a dangerous precedent for economic gains vis-a-vis ecological and environmental protection and preservation of our future." There should be a balance among social equity, people's purse, the natural environment, or planet Earth, and economic development or infrastructure development. There can be a degradation of urban quality of life if we, if we persist in building massive and high-density of commercial building. It is our duty as community leaders to convince investors and urban planners of greater reward of adopting principles that are good and sustainable. We have to shape our buildings thereafter they shape us. The image and design of the buildings and public realm reveal the citizens' priorities and aggregate aspiration. The thought suggests that the city reflects collective identity of citizency. If I may paraphrase, uh, the great Churchill, "We shape our ecological system and environment, and the ecosystem and environment shape us." We should therefore protect and preserve and balance our environment and ecological system and just for our generation, but also for the future generation, for a better planet Earth. You know, this place that is going to be proposed, this is, to me, it is not the right place. There should be an alternative. You can put this right, like in, uh, Cerebol, that would be okay, because the place is very near, uh, the bark. So, we have to, at least, Your Honor, we have to, uh, generate more alternatives for this, not in that area, I believe. This is my, based on my personal capacity as one of those who have studied this project. So if we are going to, if only, if they can answer this now, how many tons of soil, remember that this, uh, project, proposed project is besides Chinese cemetery, considering that if there will be a heavy rain, continuous rain, all those sephards coming, the water coming from the, from the dead will go down. Remember that in Malibu or Escondido or even Ponte Sito, during the rainy season last, last six months, it generated soil degradation. So I, I, I believe that we should produce here an alternative place for this, Your Honor. I still have some question here, but I will reserve it later on. Thank you, Your Honor.
Would the planners like to address that? And the applicant, could you come up and the architect and answer the Commissioners' questions if you could?
I can address a little bit of it.
Sure. Thank you.
This hillside, in, our soils tests have revealed on this hillside that the, the toe of the hillside here is all filled. It's been, it's been changed, uh, from the early days. Somehow, somebody dumped or put soil down, um, that's loose soil at the, at the toe and foot of the hill, which is the reason why we designed it to be up in and excavating this loose soil. It's not original soil. But as the mountain goes back, as the hill goes back, it does become the original hill. But somehow in the early days of this, of this site, they had some sort of road and there was a pasture and they had grazing here at this area. So that, so in terms of the, the, where we're putting and locating this, we tried to make the footprint as small as possible and take advantage of this loose fill that was not original to the hillside anyway. The amount of, of soil being removed is two-hundred-and-eighty thousand cubic yards. But out of that, we're going to be taking some of that excavated soil and putting it back, um, behind as fill fifty-five thousand cubic yards. And the original project that was, uh, entitled and okay to build, um, would excavate massive more amounts of soil removal. It would nearly undercut the entire hill. So we were, you know, as the new architect, we saw that and we, we found it, you know, very egregious to the hillside, to the underwater, uh, water, uh, you know, aquifers or whatever it is. So we, we were looking at all that. So we, we, this is the answer, um, that, you know, this is why we did what we did in terms of pulling it forward right to the street, right to the toe. I don't have the answer for the concrete, though, uh, of how much concrete, uh, would be used on that thing. Do you have any doubt?
Yeah, just, just, um, one, one more point, which is, um, there, the very, very detailed and comprehensive, uh, final EIR that was prepared includes, um, a mitigation, monitoring and reporting program, I think I got that right, that has, oh, I don't know, about nine categories of mitigation measures, and there are sub-measures. And one of those mitigation measures, uh, is, uh, relates to de-watering, which is meant specifically to, to address any potential soil erosion effects. The, the, uh, EIR consultants are here, so they can probably talk more to this, but my understanding is that, um, with that finding, it's, it's, the, the project, if it's built, would have a less than significant impact on the environment, um, under CEQA. Thank you.
Commissioners Satori.
How, how about this, uh, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
These alternatives that we have, uh, proposed will still, if there is no project, what will happen? There are no alternatives? Because, and, and the section six point zero, the so-called alternatives, right? From how many built? The CEQA guidelines stipulate that an EIR specifically include a no-project alternative. The purpose of including a no-project is to allow decision-makers to compare the impacts of approving project with the impacts of not approving the project, meaning we can go to the original plan before that we have approved. But based on my, uh, my own investigation, is that if that original plan will push through, the investor will not get, get, get more money for, for the proposal. Is that true, Your Honor?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I can address that. There, it's actually, uh, uh, quite different. The project will not get built if the project that was approved in two thousand and eight, um, is the one that is maintained. Construction costs, you, you can just look at the Chronicle, which had an article, um, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, saying that construction costs in the last two years have skyrocketed. Daly City, that article was specific to San Francisco, but construction costs are basically the same in Daly City as they are in San Francisco. The reason why this project is before you today is because that other project cannot be built. It cannot be financed, it cannot be constructed. So if you want to talk about what happens if you, if you go with the no, no project or you go to the last project, it's that you're leaving three-hundred-and-twenty-three, uh, dwelling units and a hotel and fifty-six affordable units on the table. This is a project before you today that's ready to be built. Thank you.
But, Your Honor, if you are really sincere in building a, you said, to, just to, uh, make a project here and make a development, why can't you just do the, the original project?
Because it, it costs too much money to build due to the excavation and the returns on it don't justify the cost.
So the letter that I received is that this is for profit purposes and that for project reason only, for infrastructure development? Is that, is that correct?
Um, it's, it's a reality of development that you have to be able to get money to, 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 to finance projects and banks require a return on investment. So yes, this project has a market rate component. That's, that's how development works unless it's being funded by the public. Thank you.
Commissioner?
No, laterly, I let the other. I have still a question.
May you want to stay close, the applicant and the architect? Go ahead.
So there was, um, you said there was a one community meeting? How many people were part of that meeting?
I believe there was.
From the Cypress, right?
Cypress Point?
I don't remember exactly, but it was about.
Okay. That's a eight out of like the many residents that did not show up, so.
Yeah.
So it's pretty, it's a small sample in terms of their feedback. So when we talk about that feedback, was there any type of feedback that came from the Chinese cemetery?
No.
No. Okay. Because what I understand is that, um, it is also a cultural taboo or cultural insensitivity to build some sort of residence near, um, a burial ground? Some people call it bad Feng Shui. Some people call it, uh, insensitive because it really talks about, um, I mean, as a person that teaches ethnic studies and teaches Asian-American studies, um, I think we need to be sensitive to type of developments for those, for the ancestors that have passed. So what does that mean in terms of relevancy, uh, for the community that's there? I don't think it's not much of a question, but it's just a perspective. It's, um, again, like just echoing what Commissioner Satori said, like if the buildings are an embodiment of its community, where was the community input?
Right. In, in terms of the design, the project sponsor was very sensitive about what you just mentioned about the cemetery. And, uh, and so the design basically was pushed right against Cerro Monte Boulevard. The project's design, um, has no views or windows that face the cemetery, no single one. It basically, um, is just facing out and then is just a wall in the back. And so that was a, a high consideration for the design. Any other project, including the one that was before you before, the one entitled, um, had units that were, you know, facing the back. The Chinese cemetery is predominantly from the ridge and beyond. It's not on this side. It's wooded and hillside and then the, the properties, this, the, the subject property goes back quite a distance. So we were staying as far back away from that as possible.
Thank you.
Just a pile of questions, sir. Okay. You can answer this or not.
Sure.
For this reason, is the no-project alternative is environmentally superior alternative to the proposed project, do you think?
Well, that, that's what the final EIR says, Commissioner.
Commissioners, um, okay, just a point of clarification. It may be a good, uh, time right now to talk about what's currently approved. Back, going back to two thousand and four, there was, uh, there, there have actually been different iterations of a site plan and a building plan on this property. Uh, the initial zoning established in two thousand and four did allow the two hundred units and one hundred and thirty-seven unit hotel room, uh, two hundred condominiums. Fast forward to two thousand and nine, there was a design review approval that was granted, to make slight adjustments to the proposed site plan. Uh, speaking to your point, Commissioner, about the cultural sensitivity, part of the problem with the initial site plan is that, um, not only was, uh, the grading cost identified as something that was just something infeasible, um, so it had a greater environmental impact by, uh, disturbing more of the site and area, causing greater excavation, greater tree loss. But there was also, um, the requirement of underpinning in the Chinese cemetery site. And, uh, it's our understanding that, um, the developer at the time had some discussions with the, uh, cemetery representative and, uh, that just wasn't going to happen. That was determined to be very, by the Chinese cemetery, to be, uh, basically a no-go. So the initial project, um, just really never went anywhere. So it wasn't, it was more than just a, um, a financial feasibility, just due to, you know, cultural limitations, if you will. That just wasn't going to happen. And so, uh, two thousand and nine came, a slight change to the plan, still though, a lot of grading. That project wasn't built because it was determined to be just infeasible in terms of the amount of excavation that was required. So the proposal before you actually, a question came up about, is it the environmentally superior alternative, if you will? And it, it actually is. And it, it actually is the least impactful of anything the staff's reviewed. And so that's, that's outlined in the staff report and then environmental documents that are before you also address that. So that's something that, you know, we, you know, just wanted to let you know about.
Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead.
No.
Commissioner Adamo?
So I, I did have a couple of points and questions. One of the things, when I first looked at through the entire project, that struck me was the lack of symmetry, the visual appearance of, of the buildings with the hotel tower being so much higher than the rest of the structures and being located right at that corner of Cerro Monte and Geller, which is a great location for a hotel, I could see that part. It basically created, I, I think, an eyesore, being so tall as well as not having a lot of visual creativity. The original plan from 2004, one of the things that I liked about that project was the coloration of the surfaces that broke it up so it didn't look so, best way to say it is in-your-face. And I, I feel that it's, my personal opinion is that this is just so bland and colorless that it's not going to be attractive for the neighborhood. It's very much different from back when I was a kid and they built the Transamerica Pyramid in San Francisco, which was huge compared to everything around it, but it had a certain characteristics that people actually thought was, was good because it was in San Francisco. This is Daly City and our visual, you know, our, number one, most of our buildings are much shorter. Understand that this is, is zoned currently for some taller buildings already, and I think that that would be appropriate, but I think visually it could be improved upon to make it more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. So that was one, one comment I had. The, I, I applaud your use of the narrow footprint for the placement of the building closer to Cerro Monte Boulevard. That part of it, I think, was very thoughtful to not cut as much into the hillside. And I understand that, you know, you were doing that for a couple of reasons. One was because of the preservation of the soil that was existing from the original hillside. And I'm going to guess that that probably occurred when Cerro Monte was built. And also that allows more of what I would maybe describe as, as a park-like space behind the building, which you're, you're leaving open, which I think is, is a plus. It also keeps the building from directly facing or directly being adjacent to the Chinese cemetery by giving that extra amount of space. So I, I think that was a really good, good use. The other concern I have is about the, the parking per unit. One and a half parking spaces per unit. I understand in theory that creating fewer parking spaces will push more people to using public transportation, in theory. In reality, I don't think it works that way, just, just from my experience here in Daly City. We have a lot of problems with parking in general, and so I think that that will amplify that problem. And the other concern that I had was about the impacts, even if they're temporary, on traffic on 280, where the merge comes to get off at Cerro Monte right now. At certain times of the year, especially during the holidays, I think it's a, a very dangerous exit. And I know you don't control Caltrans and we don't control Caltrans. Who knows who controls Caltrans? However, I think it create, it would create a dangerous situation at least until something changed and, and we don't have a crystal ball to know when that would improve. So those, those were my concerns that I had. I'm not sure which of those you could address, possibly the visual impact, because I think that that is, to me, one of the major downsides.
Could the app, app, uh, architect possibly come up?
Well, the visual, in terms of the visual impact, we, um, we think that the design has interest. It has, it has articulation. It has shadows. There's ins and outs. There is a, it's hard to see it. Can you pass me the mouse for a second? There's a cradle and then the units are sitting inside the cradle. The cradle is elevated up off of the public open space terrace with the amenities down below, down in here. And then these ribbons give it interest. Terms of its coloring, we, we were going to be counting on greenery and landscape to provide softening and, and put a lot of green into the, into the white is what it was our, our hope and ambitions.
You're talking about landscaping within the building itself?
Landscaping everywhere. Landscaping down, up, on shelves, on all the balconies. So we wanted to, we wanted to use landscaping as our tool for bringing in, in color. This site, although it shows very, very blue sky up here, it's been often, you know, overcast. And so we were, we didn't want to do any dark colors. We wanted to try to make a bright and lighter building to make it, uh, more pleasing, I suppose, in terms of the color. So the, the use of whites and grays, we, we thought would be a good, a good way of, we were going to use it in a great way, we thought, to, to make the building brighter and more The parking garage is, it, it's a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a needed functional necessity for the project. We had looked in, we had looked into putting the parking garage underground, but the, we didn't want to do that at the end because of the possibility of underground water streams and, and hurting the environment. So the parking garage is for the most part up. The, and then the site is challenging also because this Cerro Monte Boulevard slopes up. So, you know, the, the, it's kind of proportionally, you know, the hotel sticks out up here, like you were mentioning, because it's on the higher part of the hill and then it has a parking garage below it, which is needed to serve the, the cars for the hotel people and then also for events, weddings and conferences is what we were hoping to bring in. And the three residential buildings are, they're for sale units, which is great, and we want to, you know, we, we think it's great that there will be a sense of ownership and stewardness for the property to bring people proud of their, their, their place they're living in. There's many spaces to hold, you know, activities and, and gatherings. And then the 56 affordable units is, and housing in general is quite a lot, in my opinion.
Oh, no, I, I, I agree with that and housing in Daly City is much needed. I guess the concern that I have and...
But that is a place.
Pardon? Oh, okay. The concern, the current concern that I have and the concern that the residents that wrote letters about this had was that we need more space for people to live, however, how we implement that may, maybe should be looked at a little bit differently. Because I know we have a problem where we don't have much more ground to build on.
Right.
So that, that's an issue and it's difficult. And I understand the, the conundrum that a developer has in building, a building that needs to be able to pay for itself. It's, it's, you know, and, and I don't think it's about profit necessarily, but it's about the ability to do it in the first place.
And you had a question about parking, right?
One and a half spaces per unit, which is below this, the standard.
The, the parking consultant can, can talk about the demand. I, I just want to point out two, two, two features of, of the site and the property, too. This project is a mix of one to three bedroom units, which means that sometimes people are going to be living there by themselves. Sometimes it's going to be a couple or roommates. It's not, it's not all going to be families with little kids that need parking. So keep that in mind when you're talking, when we're debating what one and a half parking spaces means. Some of the comments from the neighbors raise a very, very interesting question, which is overflow parking coming, coming into neighborhoods. And I would say that there, there really aren't residential neighborhoods that people can park their car in and then easily get to the building. So I, I, I understand the concern there, but I'm, I just think it may be, it may, may not be something that plays out. So at that, I want to introduce the parking consultant.
Okay.
Hi there, Commissioners. My name is Michael Johnson. I work for Watree Design. Watree Design is a specialty firm of structural engineers, architects and parking planners. They do exclusively parking for 40 years now. The ratio, the 1.5 parking stalls per unit, that comes from ULI. That's the Urban Land Institute. Urban Land Institute was started in 1936 and they're a research organization, a reference source, and they look for quality developments that enhance the environment rather than just, you know, putting standards out there that really don't benefit the world. It's become a international organization. ULI is very well-respected. The shared parking manual, which is what we used, it was a manual developed by ULI and NPA, the National Parking Association. I'm a member of both. We're currently rewriting the shared use manual. The third edition comes out first quarter of next year. The 1.5, that's a, a mean number across America. Doesn't apply to San Francisco. It doesn't apply to Des Moines, Iowa. It's just a mean slice across America. We really have to look at our community to see what it is. And we worked with Hexagon Engineers and did physical surveys, I should say, Hexagon did the physical surveys. We work with them regularly on parking demand ratios. And the average ratio for the peninsula area is 1.27. We elected to use 1.30 for the residents and then a 5% factor for guests. So that's where we got the 1.37. We, we have high confidence in that number simply because we've been doing it for so long and we interact with the organizations that develop these standards and make recommendations to municipalities across the United States. So we're pretty comfortable with the number. And with that said, our comfort level doesn't come easy. Building too many parking spaces at $20,000 a space doesn't benefit a project. It uses more energy, more resources, more time. It, it's not what we look to do. Building too few parking spaces can be detrimental to the building. Build few parking spaces, people's habits will change. I, I don't think so. I agree with Howard. People's habits are changing and because of that, our response to build fewer parking is what the reality is right now. 10 years ago, we didn't have the technology to take Uber. It has completely changed how we behave and how we utilize parking. So these surveys and counts that we take on existing properties that are open and operating and we go in and do, what is the actual demand? The design demand was 1.67. The actual demand is 1.27. So the, the, the model is changing. People's behaviors, characteristics and attitudes are changing and parking is trying to respond to that. And nobody's got a magic ball, but we try to get it close because our liability is high. We miss it by 100 parking spaces and we're on the hook for that miscalculation.
If, if I could ask the Chair?
Sure.
A couple of questions. I'm not sure if you or the developer needs to answer these. One of them is, are the spaces deeded per unit or are they available for the residents to park? How is that?
So are they bundled or unbundled? That the architect would have to...
Turn the mic. Yes, they're, they're deeded per unit.
Deeded per unit. So how do you deed one and a half units?
I, I imagine it would be part of negotiating the sale that you decide.
So some units would have no parking and some would have two?
I, I cannot answer. I, I, that's usually how, how it works. I'm not sure if there's going to be some sort of a condition of approval that says that there's a minimum parking number per unit.
Okay. And a second question that I had relative to that, will there be facility for electric vehicle charging within the complex? There's a plan for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Through, through the Chair.
Sure.
There is a condition of approval that will require the submittal of a parking management plan. I don't think the detail there has been sorted out, but that'd be one of the things that we'd be looking at as part of the proposal when they submit for a building permit. So one of the things you can think about is each unit gets one parking space and then the, the, the point threes cumulatively are shared or you could, you know, deed a certain amount of parking spaces per unit. But we would probably establish a floor by which every unit has access to one parking space.
Right. There, there'd be some bundling. One of the important things to think about in this, about this site is that it's sort of self-contained. There's not a whole lot of areas where people could otherwise park aside from on the site. A condition of approval that the staff is recommending is that the north side of Cerro Monte Boulevard actually be signed for no parking. There's currently a bike lane in this area and we don't actually want residents from this project parking in that area. So if you look at just where it is, there are basically commercial development projects near it that would not tolerate residents from the project, you know, parking on their property. I mean, that just wouldn't happen. I don't mean to speak for Cerro Monte Shopping Center, but I think they'd agree with that.
Probably the tow companies would be very happy.
Right. So, so it is critical that we hit the correct number. The city staffs were closely with the parking consultant to try and reach a, you know, a parking count that's, you know, sort of driven the unit count in a, in a small way to try and get that correct blend of unit count, parking space count accurately dialed in. You'll notice on the hotel, for example, in coordination with the city's fire department, we've allowed some valet parking that could occur there. So we've really tried to work with the applicant to make sure that parking wasn't a detriment to the neighborhood.
That's all.
Point of query, Your Honor. I would like to know if the Cerro Monte Center had already proposed a hotel also? Is that still stands or it's just nothing?
Yeah, the planned development allows for a hotel.
But during the presentation of Cerro Monte here, they said they're going to put one hotel at the northeast. I remember saying that.
Yeah, the general proximity of their proposed hotel and their planned development is on the northern end of the site.
So that still stands? We don't know?
Well, it's not immediately adjacent, but...
Okay, I'm just, just asking.
I mean, it's proximate relative to the size of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now I have a few questions, if you mind, with the, probably the, one of my big concerns is that the transportation and the impact analysis for that, on that section 5.0, was done January the 2017. So since that time, Cerro Monte Mall has undergone a lot of changes with entryways and certain angles. So for me, that has made a bigger impact. And the, the fact that it's significant and unavoidable impacts off of the 280, as was discussed earlier, and that, that actually is a concern because it will still be going through changes that we, we can't foreseeing yet, what Cerro Monte Mall is going to be proposing. So how are we to know how this already, we know this unavoidable impact is significant? So what is going to happen in the future? So we don't have a crystal ball, but that is one of my major concerns is that one, excuse my throat. And then when it comes to the hotel, what assurity do we have that there will be a hotel built? So it's understanding, it's my understanding from reading through the reports is that we do not have any kind of assurity that there will be a hotel. We just are assured that they will be putting in the utilities and some grading and, but there's nothing to assure us that there will be a hotel on that site. And then also with that is a concern is, as the Commissioner Rod and then we're alluding to, is that I've heard from a fellow, and I hate to even like refer to it, our, our fellow, I don't want anybody to be left out on purchasing a condominium or renting a condominium in that area because they are even culturally sensitive, the Chinese community, to even living next to a cemetery. So then does that leave them out? And they, will they not purchase a condo or rent a condo? And then the, they alluded to it earlier, they were talking about purchasing the condo, but we, at this point, we don't even know if they're going to really, when the market comes, we, are they going to, are these condominiums for sale? Are they rental? I mean, these are big issues. And then the other is the tower, is the height of the tower and adjacent to the surroundings... And then the other is the tower, is the height of the tower and adjacent to the surroundings of it. That's a big concern as well because I think tonight's approval would allow our higher, correct? Higher density with the higher tower, that would be the approval tonight, to allow that 17 stories. Is that correct?
Well, that's correct. It's a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So that in itself is a, is something that is a big concern in mine. So if anybody would like to address those issues, the, either the architect or the applicant, on the fact that January 2017, that the impact analysis was done for the transportation, and that it was, I didn't see anything in there that was done in a December or when we did our Christmas shopping, where it's usually backed up in that area around Target. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Will Burns.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm a principal project manager with David Powers and Associates, and we prepared the environmental impact report for the project. In terms of the existing traffic conditions and the addition of the project's traffic, the intersections that are proximate to the site and also the Cerro Monte Center would operate at acceptable levels of service per the city's standards. And so that looks at just what was existing, as you said, in January 2017 versus what the project would add. And then we also have a cumulative analysis that looks at the project-generated traffic in combination with what's going to be developed at the Cerro Monte Center, and those intersection levels of service are also within the city's standards. So a level service D, which is, you know, fairly uniformly applied across many jurisdictions in this area.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the level of service was already low, like, I mean, it was already on that area around the 280, Ms. Allen? It's already the services because of the traffic currently? So on that slide.
So Geller and Cerro Monte and the PMP tower operates at D under existing conditions. SR, State Route 1, and the northbound ramps at Cerro Monte Boulevard, there you have a lower level service operating at D. The project is incorporating mitigation in terms of signaling that intersection to address that impact. And then otherwise, it's true that the weaving segment on 280 southbound would be a significant unavoidable impact. Yeah, that's not necessarily unusual with freeways in the larger Bay Area.
Yeah, because as we know, they mentioned earlier that we can't control Caltrans, but they don't seem to be currently, there's anything to help us out in that area or anything foreseen. So it's only going to get more at that time. And then the other question, could you answer the one about what assurity, who can answer that one, that we're going to have a hotel? You know, I hear a lot of talk about the hotel, but I read in the report, I don't really see anything of assurity of the hotel.
Yeah. Hotels require operators in entering into negotiations and finding operators for sites becomes a lot easier once a project is approved. I would also point out, and I think you mentioned it, Commissioner, that the conditions of approval require all of the work to be done so that as soon as an operator is found and a partnership can be reached, that the utilities, the foundation, and all of the sort of horizontal work, if you will, will be completed, and it has to be complete as a condition associated with the residential units.
Well, I do understand that, and I really appreciate that. But the problem is, I know that we, from the past, and even in Daly City and other cities, there's been proposals for hotels. And then they get to negotiations or something like that, the chance of that. So that, so that, I just find that if it's in here, if, I would like to see that it had the hotel guarantee in it. And then how do we address the, what about the setback of the building? So it's very close to the edge, which I think, as you said, is linear, and close to the edge of the front of the hill, which is great, but concerned about setbacks.
Setbacks from Cerro Monte Boulevard?
Yes.
All of the architects.
Yeah, the hotel is within the setback requirements. It is setback a little bit from the...
Three meters.
So it's, I don't know what the number of feet is, but...
Well, the setback's purposely minimized to reduce grading impact to the hillside.
That's true, too.
So it's probably, I mean, the setback's probably near zero or...
Yeah. And at the hotel, it's, again, the hotel is a very thin hotel, and so you can see the back of it. And just a couple of your points, the residential portion is for-sale ownership, prior to ownership. So that is for the three residential buildings, A, B, and C. The hotel, there's conditions in the approval that, you know, you'd be making recommendations to the council that the site would be all excavated and constructed all at once. There's no phasing in this. So the whole retaining wall first, and then the parking structures, and so everything, everything, you know, it's the project sponsors, it's my understanding, that that would be all done at the same time. And that is, isn't that in the, that's a condition, that's a condition that you're recommending forward.
Okay. So I hate to go back over to this thing again, but January 2017, things have changed, and that's a while. So when that's on our 5.0 impact analysis, can anybody address, has anybody done any updates on this?
But I can tell you that California environmental law recognizes that development projects take a long time to be complete. So instead of forcing people to continue to redo studies, continue to redo studies and have to go back and redo all them, they say that basically you hit the pause button when the application starts, and those are the conditions that you look at. And so I think that that's what happened here. It's not ideal, but you have to, you have to be able to hit pause and start and study the conditions at some point. So that's where it comes from.
Yeah. So I understand that part, but given the fact that I know that Cerro Monte's gone under the changes is a concern. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Are there any other questions?
Can I just reiterate that point? So the notice of preparation is sent out at the start of when the environmental impact report is being prepared, and that sets the baseline for the project, knowing that it can take a year or two for NEIR to actually hit the street and be reviewed by the public and the planning commission. So, you know, January 2017 is consistent with the notice of preparation circulation. Yeah, so I...
So based on that, too, what about the shuttle? They mentioned there's a shuttle in here. Like, if there's a guarantee that this is going to be the shuttle?
Yeah, it's my understanding the shuttle's part of the transportation and management program for the project. It would be part of the conditions of approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
Through the Chair. One of the things we probably should look at is, should the planning commission desire to forward the project to the City Council, is adding a condition of approval to require the shuttle. It is something that the developer has made a commitment to. It's been used as a factor in the parking analysis, to some extent, the traffic analysis. It's something that we should add as a requirement.
And to refer to Commissioner Edelman's, on the design review, if anyone has ever seen the San Jose International Airport, where it looks like there's the parking garage, but it doesn't look like a parking garage. It's like, with those hands up. Have you seen it? It looks like, it's not a mural, but it, the ways to develop it, as you know, yeah, it's very interesting. So there's plenty of ways to, it doesn't even, you can't, you don't even know it's a parking structure. So I agree. I've looked online and seen many things that would be more like appealing in our landscape. Because this is our skyline, basically. This is going to be Daly City's skyline. For other cities, it may not be as impactful, but for us, this is very impactful because that indicates the highest point in Daly City. And that road where the people live, the people that are here tonight, the people we receive the letters from, they live there and commute every day to go to the mall. And we definitely, I had some people say they will not be shopping at that mall because they will not feel comfortable going back and forth, back and forth, sitting in lines of traffic, which we already have at Christmas time. And we definitely don't want to deter people from our retail spaces, and that, that's a concern. So they're here tonight, I'm sure, and we received their letters, and they need to be, and I don't know if you reached out to them as well, but they're here, and their concerns need to be addressed.
Yeah. And Madam Chair, one more thing. Just, you made a point about people being left out. We believe that no one will be left out of this project. You know, it'll be a for-sale, prior to ownership, and then the affordable people, you know, we think that it's pulled forward right against, you know, thin buildings away from the back of our property line. There's no underpinning or anything needed. We're far away. We did that deliberately.
From the cemetery, yeah.
And we turn our backs against, you know, we don't think anyone will be turned away.
Yeah, yeah. I was just addressing that because of culturally sensitive we are here in Daly City. We're a diverse city, and even if it's close on the same property, for them, it's a serious concern, even though we ourselves may not be of that ethnicity. It's something that we need to address because we are a diverse community. And we definitely don't want anyone to feel that they are not allowed to purchase, or they feel uncomfortable even trying, and shy about it. So thank you for addressing that as well. Further, and if there's not any other questions, I'll call up the...
Your Honor, this is just a comment, not necessarily a... You know, we received a letter from Town of Colma. You know, I am, it behooves on these letters of interference. I have already said this twice. First, Cerebol, they made a comment. You know, as a government official employee, but not a government, you are not allowed, supposed to be, to be commenting on the project. Look at the Cerebol. What they did is, they made, they exercised the project that you have presented. You know, as this guy, Justice Jonathan Kwan, should better read his ethical standard of government. Because as a government employer representing the Town of Colma, and then here you are commenting on this. Although it's addressed to Corey Albit, but to me, when it comes to a public letter, it becomes a government co-ification. And to me, let this be on record, Your Honor, that we, I detest this kind of letter. If they want to do it, they can do it individually, as freedom of expression, freedom of speech, but not as this, to be as if they're exercising the city of Daly City. This guy should be, should learn how to read the so-called Bagley Kid Open Meeting and the so-called ethical standard in government. He should, he should read this, because this guy keeps on, the Town of Colma did it twice already. To me, it's an insult to the city of Daly City dictating to us what to do. Suppose I dictate also to, I make a comment about Colma. They're making a confusion year of traffic every day because of the funeral passing in Daly City. Sometimes it takes me 30 minutes to an hour just to wait for those parade of deaths. So to me, I'm just expressing this, Your Honor, because to me, let this be on record. I detest this kind of letter. But if you can do it individually, it's okay, as a freedom of expression. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, we'll open it up so we can have a public comment, right? Yes. And then please keep in mind it's a two minutes, so when I call you up. The first person is Mr. Brad Jones, please. And then after him would be Lisa Tumbow. Good evening. Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to commend the architects for reducing the footprint on the property. I think that was excellent. I am president of the Cypress Point Homeowners Association. We do oppose the project. We do not oppose development of that property, but we do oppose this project as being too massive. It would affect the views of a fairly small percentage, but a percentage of the people that live in that corner. A comment was made about how many people attended the community meeting. I would like to let you know that I was there. I was not invited, but I was there. And I would say there was about 10 people that were there at that community meeting. Most of the units in Cypress Point were not invited to that meeting. And I think there's like a certain limit, 100 yards or so to the project, that they get invited, anybody else does not. So the only reason I heard about it is because other people down on that corner let me know what was going on, so we were there. Of those 10 or so people, 90% of the people there opposed this project. Parking. You know, it's great to have these parking studies and everything, but I'm going to tell you right now, just drive around Daly City. People have four-car, or two-car garages, two driveways. They're still paving their front yards for more parking. Cypress Point, every unit has two parking spots. 80 units. We still have about 20 or 30 people that park over on Hickey. Uber. I've got one unit that has five people with Uber cars. So I'm not sure that Uber reduces the need for parking. In some instances, it increases parking needs. The shuttle. Crown Colony has a shuttle, and the worst parking in all of Daly City is in Crown Colony. So we oppose it. I appreciate you letting me talk, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And next, Lisa? Lisa Tumbow? Thank you, Lisa. You have two minutes, please. Thank you.
Well, I want to start out talking about the parking situation. I live up on the top of the hill, above the proposed project, above Cowan Boulevard. There is no parking. No parking. There are people that end up parking on the side of the street near Cerro Monte during some days of the week for the street sleeping. You cannot do this and keep getting tickets for street sleeping because there will be people who cannot find parking within a quarter mile of their house. Okay? They have to walk back and forth a quarter of a mile to get back to their car. There are Uber drivers and Lyft drivers that live up the hill from this. The entrance to the freeway, that's right by Cerro Monte High School, what used to be Cerro Monte High School when I went there. Hey, I've been here a long time. It would be completely screwed up. It's already got parking up the hill from that, trying to get up to St. Francis, that's always there, that stops the buses from getting into the bus stops. We can't keep the bus stops clear. Okay? There is no parking. If these people put this in, there is not going to be parking anywhere in the general area. Okay? People have two and three cars. They don't have 1.3. They have two and three and four. There is no way that this parking estimate is going to keep everybody parking there.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbow. Thank you very much. Next is Marian Seko. Good evening. Good evening, Ms. Seko.
It's pronounced Marian Seko.
Thank you.
I know you've been listening, and everything is parking, parking, parking. And my question to you all is, how do you value our voice? We are a small group, but we represent, I live in a cul-de-sac. There's 36 homes. I asked every one of them, if I said, if I did a petition, and I have done a petition. Number one is always parking. Number two is the traffic in and out. Like you said, it's going to impact shopping at the mall. It's going to impact everything. So my concern to you is, how do you value our voice? How much do you listen to us? Or is it dollars? Do you listen to the dollars that are sitting here? Or do you listen to us who live here, who have to deal with the traffic? That's my concern. Do we have a voice? Is it valued? And we voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Your Honor, did you listen to my...
Excuse me, we're not supposed to...
I'm just saying, just a reaction.
We have to make comments.
Okay. Go ahead.
The brown act. That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, anyway. Nadine, so, pronounces...
Nothing.
Thank you, Nadine. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. I mean, evening.
Thank you.
Basically, with all due respect to everything that I've heard from you gentlemen, it's all sugar... it's all sugar-coated. I bet you anything, none of them live there. I live in Cypress Point, where Brad is the president, and we only have one entrance. I'm a teacher. I have to go to my school. I have to be there at a certain time. I have to wait about five minutes in order to leave the complex, just to get onto the road so I can go down to the freeway. The other point is, I'm not cert, certified anymore, but I was at one point, and I, my specialty was trying, in case of an emergency, how are we gonna save all these people? In a high-density area with three hundred and twenty-three units and one eighty-seven or X amount of rooms in a hotel, if we have a fire, or we have an earthquake, which we are living on a fault, and it is gonna happen, one of those six or seven, what's gonna happen to all these people? It's gonna be on, everyone's conscious who's gonna vote for this. As the gentleman commissioner said, why doesn't this project move to where the bowling alley is in Daly City by Home Depot, Cera Mo, Cera Bowl? There's plenty of space over there. Okay? The, Daly City is a cement block now. Everywhere you look is cement. The only piece of green that we have is over there right now. Okay? I live over there. I get stuck in that traffic. I'm talking with so much passion. And just the lady said over there, what happens to our voices? You know, don't forget, elections are coming. We are gonna be the ones who are gonna be voting for all of you. I mean, I'm shaking on the inside. My daughter's here, she's gonna be speaking next. This is the future of Daly City. I, I really don't know how you can allow this to happen. And thank you for giving me the chance to talk.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for coming. Albert Costa?
Oh, that's me.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Kathy Fantasey, please.
Just a second, I can't finish, because I'm also a doctor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, please do not approve this petition that's before you tonight. The city is ignoring crucial parts of the environmental impact report to sacrifice our environmental safety in order to build this project. How else can you explain that the preface to the final report is used mostly to outline how they can override the results of the report? How else can you explain why the city dismissed serious concerns from Caltrans, who noted locating this project near the Colma-Bart station should be strongly considered? Why did they dismiss the serious concerns of the city and county associations of government, who noticed to reduce, to reduce the impact of this project, they should reduce the project scope? Why did they dismiss the serious concerns of the Town of Colma? The city said that they incorrectly stated that the project is in the vicinity of tall buildings, when there are no buildings in the area more than three stories high. There are two findings of significant unavoidable communit, uh, communitative, sorry, impacts. They found that the project would impact the, going on to the on-ramp on two eighty. And they, they can't figure out any way to mitigate this, because Caltrans won't do anything. The city then mandated that the environmental superior alternative be named, and the city named the Reduced Development Alternative was the superior, uh, but the city had no intention of using this option. How do I know this? I wrongly assumed that they would go forward with Reduced Development Alternative, and I noted this in my concerns. Their response was daunting. On March tenth, they wrote, "The city of Daly City shall prepare a statement of overriding considerations for this project. This statement supports the ultimate balance of the merits of approving the project despite its effects on the environment," which means, come hell or high water, or the effects on our environment, "the city wants the huge four building high rises built on Cerro Monte Boulevard. Please vote no on this project."
Thank you, Ms. Fantasey. Mark Loper?
That, that's me also.
Oh, yeah, you're guessing. Carolina?
Yeah. Welcome, Carolina.
Hi. So I'm an undergrad student, and I've lived in the house that's in that picture since I was four years old. And every time I come home from college, they've cut down more trees. They added a Chinese hospital. They added an in and out. Every time I come, there's something different. And every time you cut down a tree, you're messing with Mother Nature. There's habitats, there's ecosystems, there's all kinds of animals that live in there. And every time you bring in people, you're bringing in waste, copious amounts of just waste, like human waste, trash, garbage. It's gonna get noisy, it's gonna get traffic, it's gonna get gross. Um, that is essentially my backyard. Like, I don't have a backyard, but that is what I would consider my backyard, and I'm sure that no one would appreciate someone else coming into their backyard and being like, hey, we're gonna build a big building, but don't worry, it's tall and thin, so you don't have to worry about it. I just honestly, like, I don't think this is a good idea. And you guys are talking about it in terms of property and investment, but this is people's lives. That's my home, the only home I ever remember having. So I don't really appreciate people being like, oh, well, it's good economically, and oh, like, look at this big, like, it's just, it's more than that to me. That's all I've known, and that's all I probably ever will know in this economy. So, and, yeah, I just, I really, really hope you say no to this. Please.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Carolina. Okay, let me see if I can get this correct. Fernando Gallegos, please. Good evening, Mr. Gallegos.
I have, I have to apologize, because I feel like I've been raped twice. And nobody do anything. The first time it was Chevron, I'm in Shell Station, nothing happened. I couldn't cry and die. Nothing happened. In and out, they have thirty employees, they're parking anywhere they want. They have a stall in the parking, one and a half. That's nothing. I worked in the Moscone Center for thirty years. I'm working, I worked in the Park Central for thirty-five years. Fuhrer Berber's Hotel, I was not in the university, but I work as a dishwasher and have my way out. I work in the hotels all over San Francisco. That's wrong. It's really wrong. Daly City is not the place to build a hotel. That big hotel and condominiums is wrong. Because I know the fact. It is weddings. The weddings create alcohol, tanks, no respect for the cemetery. As a Latino, we respect our people. Our people is in, in the resting in peace. You wanna do it, do an El Camino Real. There is another cemetery. They say they're gonna create a war. It's no respect. Now the traffic. Every condominium, they use three families, because the economy. They leave in three families, six cars. They say one and a half car is, they're lying. It's not one and a half. Employees. They think about employees. How many employees, they're gonna use it? Compost, beverage, liquor, dance, parties. They think about that. Security, twenty-four hours a day, criminals. That's why they create San Francisco, criminals. And they come into the parties and these hotels.
Thank you.
I know that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next person is Richard Clapp, please. Good evening, Mr. Clapp.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ben. Uh, I've lived in Daly City for forty-eight years now. I've left on top of the hill, St. Francis Boulevard, now called St. Francis Raceway. And I can tell you that all the arguments about congestion and traffic are valid. These on-ramps and off-ramps, try them on a weekend. Try to get near Cerro Monte Center on a weekend. Try the, the working hours from seven thirty until one on-ramp up on Cerro Monte Boulevard. Uh, it's a mess. We were told, don't worry about it, when they passed, uh, the residences up on top, Crestview Heights. Oh my God. We have no parking on our whole street. Somebody built a path up there, paved path, from our street up to the new complex. Some, nobody ever approved a permit. Now they can walk down the hill on their paved path and use our street for parking. Apartment house at the other end, also. It's, it's, it's a mess. It's really a mess. That is probably one of the worst ideas I've ever heard advanced in forty-eight years. You wanna add to congestion, you wanna add to a mess in Daly City, path that mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clapp. Laura Clark, please. Ms. Laura Clark, oh, hi. That's okay. That's okay. Take your time. It's okay. And behind that would be Mr. Rodriguez after her. And if anyone else has any cards, please let me know. Good evening, Ms. Clark.
Evening. Um, hi. Um, I understand a lot of the concerns about parking. Um, I understand a lot of the concerns about traffic. Um, those are sort of daily issues. Um, for me, the daily issue is where is my generation gonna live? The cost of housing is out of control. The average home value in Daly City is luckily currently under a million. Um, but that's out of reach for me. That's out of reach for probably the grad student who's worried about getting out of her parents' house, I assume. Um, it's out of reach for most of the people who would like to be able to join your community. There are a lot of jobs in this area, and traffic comes from not building housing near jobs. That's where it comes from. And the whole Bay Area has chronically underbuilt housing for decades. And I understand that it's really hard to say, maybe this is a good idea, but how are we going to live up to our mutual obligations to one another? My generation needs housing. I understand that people really feel like they need their parking spot, and, and I empathize with that. But the future of our cities is housing. And we can build a great new bus line. We can improve Caltrain. Uh, we can vote not to repeal the gas tax, just by the way, uh, we need to fund all of our transportation. Um, but we really do need to live up to our obligations to one another, to our future generations, to creating the inclusive communities that I have heard you guys say you really want. How do we build inclusive communities? It's gonna be building a lot more housing, building a lot more opportunities for people to join your community, for teachers, for the kids who want to go to your school district, for all the people who are waiting, begging, banging down the doors, saying, please, I would like to be your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Rodriguez, please. Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, I know, all I gotta say is ditto for everybody that spoke already, but as far as the building, housing is a problem. And the problem is, they build before they have the infrastructure to handle it all. And it's something that should be addressed, I think. And I, personally, I, I think the, the development's too big. I think they should go to areas that have the room for it. And I don't know who's, who's pushing the idea of a Daly City, especially around here, it's gonna be so congested, that it's gonna be horrible. You're gonna have to make an appointment to go shopping, the Cerro Monte Shopping Center, and also Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. And there are just, I don't know, I don't like it. Anyway, they're cutting all the trees down, and I know they, they, they say it's gonna be a beautiful project, but I don't think so. But I think it should be really thought about before they put a project like this in Daly City, because we're choked now. You can't, like, she was talking about the parking, you cannot park. You can't, and to, to think that it's gonna be one and a half parking space per unit, I don't think so. You're gonna have ten cars for every unit. Look out, you know. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, Commissioners, are there any other questions to the applicants?
I'm okay.
Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. Any other public comments out there before I close it?
I'd like to speak some more.
You already had the...
I didn't give you time. I have a lot of stuff to say.
It's, it's only two minutes. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a, it's, it's two minutes per person, to be fair to everyone. Yeah, yeah.
Your Honor, can I make a comment on that?
Oh, yeah. And you can also send in written comments as well.
Um, you know, this quasi-judicial body, Planning Commission, is just more of a plan, uh, recommendatory. If you have any concern regarding the project proposal, you can write down a position paper to the planning, to the city council, eventually. So, more or less, you, so your voices can be heard properly.
Yes.
I ask you the question, how do you value our voice?
Wait, if you're, if you're listening to me, if you're listening to me, then probably you will understand where I'm coming from. But anyway, uh, we respect it. We respect everybody here, okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah, Commissioner. He was just trying to say that there's an avenue to, from this project to even write to the planning, just like you have sent me one with the emails and everything else. And just to let people know that we have, we up here in planning have heard and have read every single, um, I know that everybody has agreed upon that, and have heard tonight. So, with that, I want to close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And we need a voice vote, please.
Bring your second first. Don't we need a second?
Yeah, we do.
Who's gonna give a second? Ron?
Second.
Thank you, Ron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, with that, okay, we're going to vote on the item, one by one, correct? Okay, we're gonna vote on the recommends that the Planning Commission for, to the city council, the following recommendation, right? So, we do it one by one. Okay. We're gonna do a vote.
You have to state it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes. I'd like to have a motion, please.
For, are you outlining all three items, the findings, the environmental assessment, and the gen, the actual project?
All together.
Are we gonna, are we doing one by one?
Do the findings first.
Okay, so for the findings, so we need a motion?
Yeah, for the findings, to adopt the findings as outlined herein. May I have a motion?
Motion.
I second the motion.
And then we can, can we have a roll call for this one? Or we just have a voice vote?
You can do whatever, you can do whatever the chair would prefer. You can do, do a voice vote.
We can do a voice vote, okay. So I would like to have a roll call, please.
You'd like a roll call?
Please.
Okay. Satori?
I'm staying.
Das Magwal?
No.
Edelman?
No.
Di Giovanni?
No. Okay, so if we vote a no on that one, because usually this is the first time we voted no in a while, then do we move on to the recommend that the city council? Or is that...
Well, you, I believe you can still make a motion on the environmental assessment.
And then you can make a motion to, uh, forward to the city council, recommendation to not approve.
Okay. So we're gonna make a motion on the environmental assessment report, and on the recommendation that the city council approve, uh, we can't say approve.
Affirm, the environmental assessment.
Affirm, EIR.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So I would like a roll call, please.
Do we need a motion?
We have, we, do we have a motion?
So, so, right, so I second the motion that we...
Thank you, yeah.
That.
Roll call, please.
Sorry. Uh, Satori?
I, I'm staying.
Das Magwal?
No.
Edelman?
Yes.
Di Giovanni?
No. Okay, next.
You need a motion on the floor to move the project forward, either recommending it or recommending it not be approved.
Right, okay. So may I have a motion to either recommend that the city council approve, correct, the general plan amendment?
Or a motion on the floor to not approve.
Yeah.
So I, I move that we do not approve and pass this on to the city council for approval.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
So we're voting no.
That's correct.
Just to vote no.
Yeah, that's right, no confusion there.
Forwarding it to the city council with the vote of no.
A yes, a yes means no, just for clarification.
Yes means that we're forwarding it to the city coun- Yes means that we're forwarding it to the city council.
Correct.
For their, for them to take action.
Yes.
For them to take action with the no.
Yeah, that's going to be our, our.
Your honor, a point of query.
Oh, we can't, we're in the middle of a vote.
In case, in case this project does not go to the city council, what will happen?
It goes to the city council with a no recommendation from the planning.
That's what I'm saying, because this is, this body is just a recommendatory body. That's right.
That's correct. This item still would move forward with a recommendation either way from the Planning Commission.
But it's moving forward with, with us not approving it.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Well, we haven't voted yet. But he was saying the yes is a no. Okay.
Okay. We all have a motion. We have a motion in a second, so I will do roll.
Roll call, please.
Satori?
Abstain.
Das Magwal?
Yes.
Edelman?
Yes.
Di Giovanni?
Yes. So we want to thank everybody. So this will be moving forward to the city council as not approved by the Planning Commission. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening to us.
And then, yeah, we have, we're almost at the end. Do we have any acquisitions? Sorry, no, that, vacations or section 65602?
Nope.
So in the adjournment, we would like to thank associate planner Corey Alvin for all of his great work and look forward to hearing great things to come for you. With that, adjourn the meeting. Good night, everyone. Thank you.